All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. First item up on our agenda is to approve our agenda as presented. I'll entertain a motion to approve our agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to our consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve our consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to our financial report with Ms. Johnson.
I know, you got me this month at scary times. Um, so there's no real, um, no real issues with the financial. It's where we should be. March is seventy-five percent of the fiscal year, so we're looking at nine out of the twelve months. Um, Scott Ray has reported that local revenues and state revenues are being realized as budgeted, so we are good there. Um, we are, as we look at our facilities and capital projects with South Clinton, they are being realized as planned and budgeted. When we look at federal projects, um, we have spent all of ESER one point O funds that basically went towards our virtual program that we offered during the heat of COVID. We do still have ESER two point O and ESER three point O funds, but we are expending those in a normal, a normal rate. The state is happy with how we are doing that. We did receive just FYI for our ELC grant that's paying for our COVID testing and our school nurse salaries at this point. That was extended for another year, so that will be a two-year grant. We will expend most of those funds this year just because we moved our nurses' salaries into that, out of GP. Um, however, they have told us recently that there is a chance that there will be money added to the pot next year for round two. So there's a possibility that we will be able to use some of that grant for our nursing funds next year. Then our, um, school nutrition, we, uh, do have a surplus. Uh, what has been the gift for that has been we've gotten several USDA grants, of which we are purchasing to buy equipment, and then we're having to match some of the funds that we have to that grant. But then also because we have free, uh, breakfast and free lunch through the USDA, our participation rates have increased, and so our reimbursement rates have increased. That, they are saying will not happen next year, so we'll have to go back to the other, and so we'll, we'll see a significant decrease in those funds, uh, next year. But otherwise, Scott says that we are on track with no concerns. Any questions?
Any further questions for Ms. Johnson? All right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve our financial report for the month of March as presented.
So moved.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Go Lori!
Do we have a motion and a second? Any further questions or comments or apprehensions? Hearing none, Kim, could we have a roll call vote, please?
David Queener?
Yes.
Lori Wilson?
Yes.
Tim Bible?
Yes.
Joey Smith?
Yes.
Curtis Isbell?
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on to new business, uh, first item up is approval of our twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three salary schedules on first and second reading.
Okay, so, um, Scott, Ray, and I have spent quite a bit of time just analyzing where we are with our budget and what we, uh, project we will get. We have not gotten our BEP estimates yet at this time. However, we do know that the governor has put, um, a hundred and twenty-five million into teacher salaries. Um, so we kinda looked at where we were, and I know that we're all committed as a school board to try to enhance our school salaries just to keep us competitive with district, districts around us. So, um, what we feel like is very feasible for next year, we're pleased to announce that we are doing if, just to kind of, for those who might be listening, we don't do a percentage. Most school systems will do like a two percent raise. What happens is your newer teachers don't get as much as your experienced teachers do, and then over time, that gap widens to where it's almost an unfair gap. And so we kinda take a different philosophy here, and we have eighteen to, eighteen, twenty steps on our salary scale. And so each year you go up a step, which recognizes you for your seniority and longevity with our system and for your experience, but we give the same flat raise to everyone because whether you're a first-year teacher or an eighteen-year teacher, you're working equally as hard and deserve the same amount of raise. So for our teachers, they will be receiving a twenty-one-hundred-dollar raise on all of the steps, so they will get that plus their step increase for this year. And then for our classified staff, it will be a thousand-dollar raise plus their step, um, for experience. So it's really difficult for us to say we're giving an exact percentage because it depends on where you are on the salary scale. So what we typically try to report to you is just the median salary increase. So our median salary increase for teachers is roughly almost at four percent, which is a significant, and we're super proud to be able to do that. And then for our teaching assistants, just because their pay scale is so significantly lower than your certified teachers, it ends up being about four point four percent. But that's your median, so you're gonna have some teachers that get a little less and some teachers that get a little bit more. But, um, I think in talking with other districts, this appears to be slightly more than what, uh, surrounding districts are gonna be able to do for this year. Um, but, um, I'm super pleased to be able to do this, and then hopefully if TISA passes and we get that extra half a million dollars for the following year, we'll be able to do another, another fairly good bump next year, given that we don't have any foreseeable financial struggles. So any questions on the salary schedule? I have not announced this to teachers yet, just 'cause it needed your approval first, but I had the email written, and I will be pushing send before I leave, before I leave the meeting if it is approved.
Any further questions or comments for Kelly? All right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve salary schedules for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
So moved.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, Kim, could we have a roll call vote, please?
David Queener?
Yes.
Lori Wilson?
Yes.
Tim Bible?
Yes.
Joey Smith?
Yes.
Curtis Isbell?
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on to our twenty-twenty-two and twenty-three budget.
Yes, and before we move on to budget, you've just, Scott Ray not being here, you're getting all kinds of Kelly today. Um, I do want to say that before we did this twenty-one-hundred-dollar raise, that TEA, we analyze where we are, um, in comparison to other states, and we were in the top ten in starting salaries in the state of Tennessee. And that has been done with this school board's focus on that. And so I really do feel like that with this bump, I appreciate you all supporting it. I think that's gonna help move us up even further in those rankings with beginning, with beginning teachers, and so we certainly appreciate that. So Scott, in the central office, has worked on putting together the first read of the budget for you. Um, he did want me to point out where it says RE correction. There is not really a correction there. He should have, he should have deleted the word correction. Um, but, um, but where we are is this is basically just, um, what we know of now. Like I said, we have not gotten our April BEP estimates yet, so we have kind of had to make some assumptions on that. Our general purpose school fund is gonna be about ten point five million with federal projects, and that does include the teacher salary raise that you just voted on, so that has been rolled into the, into the budget. With federal project funds, we have yet to receive our federal allocations. Those were supposed to drop in today, to my knowledge, they have not. So we had to make a few assumptions on those as well, based on what we received last year. As you know, federal project funds is kind of a, it is a moving target, and we just kind of adjust our budget as, as we receive information, um, from the feds. And then our cafeteria fund, Scott did say that he did do a little bit of a reduction in that budget, just taking into consideration that we're losing that USDA grant where everybody eats for free for breakfast and lunch. And so no real surprises there. We will continue. This is just the first reading, so we'll bring it back to you in May. Um, once, hopefully, we will have BEP estimates at that point in our federal allocations, and we can make any adjustments for second reading that we need to. Um, but, um, Scott feels that this gets us off to a good start. So any questions?
Any questions for Kelly? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve on first reading our twenty-twenty-two and twenty-three, um, budget.
So moved.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, Kim, could we have a roll call vote, please?
David Queener?
Yes.
Lori Wilson?
Yes.
Tim Bible?
Yes.
Joey Smith?
Yes.
Curtis Isbell?
Yes. Motion carries. Moving on to our soccer field lease with Anderson County Government.
Yeah, so this has kinda transpired over the past month, but as you know, uh, we continue to expand our offerings for extracurricular activities for our students. And, uh, so we had two teachers that were interested in starting a girl's soccer team this year, and when I say that it exploded, that would be an understatement. The demand and the interest in, in girl's soccer was just, was huge. And so, um, we were actually practicing on the soccer fields by, uh, Second Baptist Church, and, uh, Dan Jenkins, the principal of Clinton High School, is assisting with that team, and so we, he was allowing us to use those fields under the Anderson County Schools lease. And so when the turf was put on the Clinton High School football field, then the soccer team, Clinton High School, is moving, and they're gonna be playing on that turf field at the, at the football stadium. So they no longer had the lease with the county. So I've been, um, in conversation with Terri Frank, and I will tell you that she has just been simply amazing to work with. And so we started the conversation of how could we secure some practice spots, um, on this field? And so she brought it to my attention that we could lease it, just like the county did. So she has worked with, um, their attorney and has drafted the lease to where they would lease it to us for a dollar a year, and then we would kind of have, we would have access to that for all of our soccer. We also, we amended some language. At first, it was for soccer use only. We went back to the drawing board. We can now use it for any sort of educational activity associated with Clinton City Schools. There is a, um, there is a phrase in there that if there are other community soccer leagues, that they would be allowed to have access to it too. And then there is a flag football league that has lots of little children enrolled that has nothing to do with Clinton City Schools, but they had been playing on there. And so the lease does state that, that they could continue to hold their flag football games there as well. So basically, it's a dollar a year for us. We just, uh, we checked with our liability. It does not increase our liability insurance at all. Um, and so we would be, the, uh, prisoners are going to, uh, keep it mowed, so that will, we will not have to do. Really, the only maintenance we would have to do is the strapping of the, of the field if we had a soccer game, and then the bathrooms. We would be responsible for maintaining, keeping the bathrooms stocked with toilet paper and, and paper towels and, and cleaning them and, and that sort of thing. So it's only good for one year, so we can try it for a year. I do know that down the road, there are plans to build a family justice center on that spot, so I don't know that this lease will be, you know, long-term. It's, but we'll revisit it year after year, and if we see that it has benefited us, that's been a good thing, then we'll, we will bring it back to the board next year to, um, renew that for another year. If it hasn't been a good thing, then, then it's only for a year. So, um, we need your approval before I'm able to sign that lease with them.
Kelly, do we have a, uh, what are those machines that actually does put the striping on it?
They're there in the storage closet.
Okay, so they are available?
I have used it.
Okay, perfect.
Very, very poorly. But I've used it. It's there, yeah.
All right.
Uh, we probably would have to buy some paint.
Yeah.
Other than that, I think there's a couple of them in there.
Yeah. They do make a robot one now, I saw on Facebook.
Would be a better.
Yeah, that makes you like, when you start talking about things, how it pops up on your Facebook feed. And so we've been talking about soccer fields, and now all of a sudden, on my Facebook, I see a little robot that actually stripes it by itself. So maybe we can find a donor for that. When ET gets home, I'll put him on that.
Any further questions or comments for Kelly regarding the lease for the soccer fields?
And that's all three fields?
Yes.
Okay.
It is. And we really hope, like, I would like to foresee maybe letting North Clinton go there for their field day, and if we wanted to hold like some sort of STEM day where we, you know, did all kinds of outdoor activities. I mean, I really think we're very limited in green space with, you know, all three of our campuses. So I think if this works out, it would give us just an extra, extra space for our kids to meet and do some interesting things.
Any further questions or comments for Kelly? All right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve, uh, soccer field lease with Anderson County Government.
So moved.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to purchasing a new vehicle, which is greatly needed.
We've not purchased a vehicle in Clinton City Schools, I believe, in about twelve years. I know I've been here eleven, and we have not since I have been here. And, um, so the van is obviously the newest, but the RAV4 and the Tribute are getting some, some age on it, and we do have teachers that travel to conferences. Central office has to go to meetings in Nashville, and, um, and then we pick up children, too. If, you know, we, we are well-known, if, if a parent's car breaks down, then we hop in the van, or the RAV4, the Tribute, and we try to get them into school. And so we've just reached the point where I'm a little uncomfortable. We, we just, we need a good, solid new vehicle that's gonna, that's gonna get people that we can depend on. So we actually, we've worked with Roger and Gail at the city. Um, there is a state contract, and so I'm coming to you, um, seeking approval for us to purchase a, it's just a Ford Explorer. It's not a fancy one, it's just kind of your standard, um, Ford Explorer. Uh, it's my understanding, I think, that it will be white. We're having to get it from Murfreesboro because we're getting it on a state contract. But part of our summer learning camp, what we're trying to do is there is a transportation grant that is tied to our summer learning camps, and we don't provide transportation in Clinton City Schools. So we actually applied for this grant last year and were denied because they said you couldn't use it for capital purchases, even though we were gonna use the van to pick up kids for summer school, or whatever car we bought, we were gonna use it to pick up kids from summer school. It was denied. But Scott has talked to Mary Andersky, the CEO of the state, and has kind of given a little bit more information about our situation and how that vehicle could also be used for after-school tutoring and some other things, just as, as we try to, we try to get kids where they need to be. So she is looking at that grant right now under second consideration. So if we were to get that grant, it would pay for the majority of the vehicle. But if we don't, Scott feels confident that, um, given our financial and where we are with our budget this year, that, that we could, we could get it with no worries.
Which vehicle are we replacing? Are we gonna surplus one to take one out of the rotation?
I don't know that we'll surplus it. We'll, we'll move one to maintenance. We do the, I think the South Clinton, the green van, I think it might be forty-five years old. I've never seen anything that could be, I mean, even Scott Ray is saying he's gonna take it to the junkyard, if that tells you anything. That tells you how bad the green van is. He himself is gonna take it to the junkyard. So I think the thinking is, is that for, for in-city travel, obviously, you know, running two miles, that's kind of a different story than taking a three- or four-hour trip. So, um, so I think the thinking is, is that he will take one of them and move it into maintenance for a maintenance vehicle.
And if we do get that grant, you know, you might, since we do know we have the money in the budget that will pay for, um, a full vehicle, we may wanna consider replacing one of those other older vehicles as well, just to try and get a couple of reliable, safe vehicles on the, on the road.
I did send, um, Greg Fay an email, um, last week and just said when they reached the point that they're thinking that they're gonna surplus some CUB trucks, to reach out and, and let me know. I know that before I came to Clinton City, we have done that, and we have a couple of, couple, I think, one, at least one that a maintenance, that a, that maintenance uses to come get the mail and, and such. So, um, at least I put that little seed out there that if they surplus, that we would like to have first dibs on that.
All right, now, is this the total amount contract, all, um?
That is correct.
All fees and everything?
Yep.
I didn't know if you wanted us to do a ballpark figure in case those have changed or anything.
That should be it.
All right. All right, any further questions for Kelly regarding purchase of a new Ford Explorer? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve purchase of a Ford Explorer.
So moved.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, Kim, could we have a roll call vote, please?
David Queener?
Yes.
Lori Wilson?
Yes.
Tim Bible?
Yes.
Joey Smith?
Yes.
Curtis Isbell?
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on to reports and information, uh, sixth grade graduation will be May the twenty-sixth. Uh, summer law will be coming up in July. Uh, devaluation packets are also, uh, should have those, are they in our packets right there?
They're in your budget notebooks, yes.
They're in our budget notebooks. Uh, Molly Scarborough has agreed to do that once again, so, uh, be looking at those and, and thinking about Kelly's evaluation. That pretty much completes the reports and information. We'll move on to the director's report.
Okay, before we do that, we'll do our principal's report. So, uh, it's not on there for, no, it's not on there, but we're gonna do it anyway. So Leann, you're on the edge, you're on, you're on the edge, so come on up. She did look a little bit more comfortable about three hours ago.
Yeah. Um, so we are continuing our focus, um, from now until the end of the year on student ownership, um, through success criteria and, um, how are students gonna know that they're successful? So I've been asking teachers to visit each other's classrooms and look for, um, evidence of success criteria in their colleagues' classrooms because I feel like, um, there are a lot of great things going on in our school, and teachers are in their classroom, and they don't get to see all the great things that the people around them are doing. So they've been sending me lots of pictures and lots of things that they've found in each other's classrooms, so I love that they are learning from each other. Um, we had our kindergarten roundup on March thirty-first, and we got to meet, um, a lot of our rising kindergartners for next year and their families, and that's always fun, and we always hear lots of fun things from those, um, little babies that are coming to us next year. So we're looking forward to, um, them coming in next year. And I just wanna say congratulations to Ms. Rebecca Sharp. Um, the Blaze Color Guard had a competition, um, on April second at Carnes High School. They got first place, but they were amazing, and I'm just super proud of the work that she's done with kids from all three schools. And it's just, if you haven't seen them perform, it is so touching to watch those kids, and they just do such a great job, and I'm so proud of them and, um, so proud of her as their leader. Um, and I'm also proud, I just wanna say that I'm proud of all our kids that participated in the Mosaic Festival, and their artwork was showcased this past weekend. And they came out, the, um, kids that were in the ukulele club and the orf ensemble came out and braved the rain and the snow and the cold temperatures, and they still had smiles on their faces, and they did a great job, and it was definitely worth being out in the cold and having wet hair to watch them perform, so, um, congratulations to them. We're gearing up for testing coming up, and we have lots of end-of-the-year activities coming up as well, so we're gonna have our last behavior incentive with some Kona Ice on May second, so everybody's excited about that. Um, we're gonna have our spring dance coming up, Field Day on May twelfth, which we're super excited that we can have Field Day again because we've missed out on that because of COVID. So we're, um, so thankful that we're getting kinda back to normal. And our awards day is gonna be on May twenty-fifth, and then we're gonna have a fourth through sixth grade talent show on May twenty-third, and that's always fun. So lots of good things coming up this last, um, last stretch of school.
Great, before you leave, we always enjoy a good story. And so you have to tell the Under Pressure Queen David Bowie story to the school board because they will so appreciate it. Just don't identify the child.
I will not. So this little friend, um, was waiting with me for, um, his, somebody to come pick him up. So we were sitting in the office just having a conversation, he's in first grade, and I was like, hey, let's listen to some music. So I played the song "Under Pressure" for him, and he said, did Mr. Glasshouser write that song? And I was like, no, he didn't. It's Queen and David Bowie. And he goes, did they go here? You can't make this up, and they make me smile every single day.
Oh, my goodness, we have had so much fun. Do they go to school here? Mr. Glasshouser did make it apparent to Leanne Bostel that if he did write "Under Pressure," that he would not be a music teacher at South Clinton Elementary School. All right, come top that, Ms. Sharp. You did have the bunny, you did have the bunny show up today at Clinton Elementary School.
The Easter Bunny came today, and, um, all the kids appreciated that. Um, that was fun, just to see their, I thought, when the bunny was walking down hallway, and everybody thought it was Joey, but it wasn't.
They did think it was Joey. You were the first guess.
They were like, that's Joey.
I wonder why.
I'm like, no, I thought it was too, so, um...
Maybe it was.
Um, April is Autism Awareness Month, and so this month, we've been celebrating our autistic students, and we had dress-up days, we had a hats-off day, uh, we had a blend-together day, we had Wacky Wednesday, and today was sensory-friendly clothes, um, with pajamas. And I just wanna say that Ms. Wilson has done a great job highlighting these students and teaching others about some of their behaviors. Um, and it, it's really, really been, um, a great week. Um, but she's doing stuff all month for that, so I wanted to, uh, highlight that. And then I also wanted to say thank you to Allison Swanner for all of her hard work for the Mosaic Art Festival. It is top-notch. It is, she puts a lot of effort into that. Um, I wanted to thank Matthew Case for his hard work for the ukulele club performing. And I also wanted to thank Joey and Susan Smith for helping out. Um, they are always there when anyone needs a helping hand, and that is recognized by our staff and very much appreciated, so thank you. Um, I wanna recognize Ms. Odell. She does an after-school STEM class, and she is teaching the kids to fly drones right now. And they are just beside themselves, and, um, there's a lot of things that go on that, you know, a lot of people don't see, but that's so real-world to them, and they're having a blast. We are also gearing up for, uh, teen ready next week, so they've done a lot of test prep. I feel like we've lived in the test prep world, and we are ready. Um, some of our May dates that you may want to, um, jot down. May second starts Teacher Appreciation Week, and May fourth is our cookout. And then, uh, May fifth, we have Grandfamilies Night, and that's at South Clinton, and that's for the whole school system. On May eleventh, our students are going to Biz Town. May thirteenth is three-through-sixth Field Day. May eighteenth is the Fifth Grade Wax Museum. May nineteenth and twentieth is Sixth Grade Camp. May twentieth is also K-through-two Field Day. Uh, the twenty-fifth is Awards Day, and the twenty-sixth is our graduation at nine o'clock, so...
Thank you all.
Thank you.
We try to cram as many fun activities as we can in the month of May. May is a crazy month. All right, Ms. Rail?
I also wanna thank our, our teachers and our students and all the people in the community who came together and made the Mosaic Festival so wonderful, such a great experience, no matter what the weather, no matter what the circumstances. And the kids had a great time, and all the families had a great time watching and looking and admiring all the art. Um, I do wanna recognize, too, some grant winners. We had, I don't know what happened, but we had like a gazillion grant winners this, uh, over the last few weeks. We have our district-wide social worker who, um, got a grant for, uh, calming corners for each homeroom, and then we had Ms. Amos's fifth grade, uh, class has a facing math grant, which is an integration of art and math together. Ms. Reed has, uh, won a grant for a hand center for working with fine motor skills for her first graders. Uh, Drews Overton has, um, won a grant for multi-disciplinary therapy boost for speech and language, uh, pathologists, OT and PT, um, sh, to have these shared therapy supplies and a classroom set of pencil grips and scissors for teachers to check out for students who may need a little bit of extra support. Uh, Ms. Flora's third grade class will be having butterflies that will come as caterpillars and get into little chrysalises and come out and fly away. Then Ms. Ray, um, our guidance counselor, has, uh, won a grant for social-emotional learning books and games. She had some before, but she had wanted to update, uh, many of those to meet today's needs. And then Ms. Getelfinger has, uh, won a grant for some STEM tub stations for her classroom and kindergarten. Ms. Spencer's kindergarten class won a grant for flexible seating. Uh, and then one of our assistants, um, Kelly Gomez, our librarian Jenny Jackson, our interventionist Lynn Neal, and, uh, Kelly Reed participated in a math and movement and hop into literacy, they won some math and movement mats and hop into literacy mats They won some math and movement mats and hop into literacy mats by doing a ten-hour session, um, set of sessions about trauma and learning. And so they got all of these several, like a hundred-dollar-a-piece mats free just for attending the session and meeting the requirements for that. So we have all kinds of fabulousness that has come to our school. I was, I was looking at all the different ones and I thought I've got to recognize how wonderful that, that, that was. We also had our kindergarten roundup on March twenty-ninth. Lots of kindergartners coming to North Clinton next year. Uh, on April eighth, we had our spring pictures and cap and gown pictures. And we're wrapping up our PLCs um, this year to include student-to-student academic conversations in all classrooms, K through six. And they, um, in those conversations, that's included in all five parts of their essent, essential learning lessons. And then we have um, success criteria for those academic conversations. So we're ready to begin the twenty-two, twenty-three school year using these academic conversations. And every class will have already had a year of practicing this in grades one through six right off the bat. So it's been pretty fabulous listening to the, to our little scholars having these academic conversations.
You're good. Thank you. North Clinton's feeling the love with all those grants. That's fabulous. That completes our principal reports.
We'll move on to the director's report.
Okay, you've heard us talk a lot about the Mosaic Arts Festival. That was because it was fabulously fun and extremely cold. And so I think the time span that we were there on Saturday, we saw sun, we saw rain, we saw sleet, we saw snow. But we saw lots of happy kids' faces. They still performed and the parents still had a great time. And so uh, that is a massive, though, undertaking for our art teachers. And um, just to walk through the, the tent and to, to see the beautiful art displays, it was just an amazing weekend. Um, Catherine Burke Beck and the uh, uh, Historic Downtown Clinton uh, was a key role in just making this happen for our system. So we certainly thank them for that. Piggybacking off of what Monica has said, the good news about North Clinton Elementary School is out there. Man, people are flooding. So when we looked at our, you know, we had to add a kindergarten classroom last year because our kindergarten numbers were so high. So obviously, we have to have two first grades. So we were eager to kind of see how roundup and pre-K registration has unfolded. But we will have to now have two kindergarten and two first grades at North Clinton, which is, it, it's awesome. So we've got plans for doing that. We've got the space to do that. Um, she has actually hired the teacher to do that, so we will be announcing her, her very soon. But um, it's just, it's, it's good news that, that North Clinton is, the, the word is out there that it's a fabulous place. We also, last Thursday, had our Blaze Staff and Student Ball Game. That was loads of fun. Um, let's see, Leann was a dancer, Jenna was a cheerleader, Monica was gonna play basketball, then she decided not to, so I dragged her out on the dance floor for cha-cha slide. So um, we had lots of teachers doing lots of different things, playing with the kids. Lori's son came back. He was part of our, Jack was part of our uh, inaugural basketball team. And so we invited him to come back and play as the staff. And, and he, that was just amazing to see him come back. But anyway, it was a great night. Um, it, it came down to a three-point spread. It was a little nail-biter at the end and the white team ended up winning by three points. Um, all proceeds uh, went to ET Stamey and his ongoing rehabilitation. After we paid the refs and the SRO, um, we were able to deposit nine hundred and eighty-five dollars into his account. So, so we were happy to do that for our dear friend. And the South Clinton addition is coming along great. Walls are going up, so we are starting to see um, things happen. Leann has, she's working on her strategy of who's gonna go where. She's restructuring some things, but that space is gonna be um, definitely put to good use next year. Also, as we're uh, talking about grants for North Clinton, one thing that wasn't mentioned was Shannon Cook and Kelly Reed, a few months ago, actually won a grant to begin um, a North Clinton golf experience. And so ET had kind of uh, messed around with a golf clinic with Boys and Girls Club last year. They kind of took it and, and ran with it. And um, so uh, they are in the process of buying the materials right now from the grant. And then they're gonna be providing for North Clinton a golf clinic for them to expose them to a new extracurricular activity. So next week, our testing will begin. That will be grades two through six will be the ones testing. To give you an update on TISA, the new school funding, it is still working its way through General Assembly. Next, next week, it's supposed to be in the House Finance Subcommittee and the Senate Finance Committee. Um, there's two different versions right now. And monetarily, they're, they're, they agree. But just on some procedural things and some levels of accountability, there's two different versions. So um, they're gonna have to do their joint committee, I'm sure, before it hits the floor to see if they can come up with um, a consistent, a consistent bill. But if it does pass, it's gonna be about half a million dollars more for, for Clinton City Schools. And so we will certainly take that, what that will allow us to do is some of these programs and money that we've started with our SRR funds. Hopefully, that will allow us to continue um, to, to keep those programs going. Um, also, I wanted you to know that we've entered a, a neat partnership with Boys and Girls Club and the University of Tennessee. So um, we, we know that University of Tennessee produces quality teacher candidates. We have several that have come to work with us with Clinton City Schools and they can just hit the gate and they can just take off running. So we are partnering with some of their teacher candidates to come and work and tutor some of our students at Boys and Girls Club after school. And then our hope is that these teacher candidates are gonna stay with us and work in our summer learning camps, particularly in our kindergarten boost program, which is what I want to tell you about next. So um, as part of our summer learning camps this year, we are going to add a kindergarten boost camp, which is gonna be available to forty of our rising kindergarten students. And so this is gonna be a four-week program held at North Clinton in conjunction with the existing learning camps. But it will just be half a day. But the purpose, they'll, they'll be in our pre-K rooms, but the purpose is going to be just working on some pre-readyness skills, such as writing your name, how to hold a pencil, how to hold a crayon, how to cut, you know, um, how to line up, how to use the bathroom independently. And so um, all of these pre-kindergarten skills. And we have gotten several um, that have already registered for that. But we really want those to be, that, we want those two classes to be capped at twenty apiece. And so we're looking forward to adding that as a new program this year. And then also, I honestly cannot remember if I've told you this or not, so I'm gonna tell you again. If I have, I apologize. But I know that you are aware that we did receive the Best for All Distinction from the, from the uh, Tennessee Department of Education. We had to participate in the All Core Tutoring, which we have done. And then we also had to use at least fifty percent of our SRR three-point-oh funds to be awarded the Best for All Distinction. Um, we actually have used one hundred percent of our SRR three-point-oh funds towards uh, learning loss and mental health. Um, but because we were labeled that, that gave us an additional pot of money of a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So since our last school board meeting, that pot of money was approved. And so Danny is gladly spending that money as we speak on first-grade iPads and replacing third-grade Chromebooks with a more updated Chromebook. And um, so those funds will be used for technology. And then also, as we continue to get intervention materials and things to address uh, learning gaps. And then finally, I wanted to let you know that maybe third time is a charm, but we are hoping that we can pull off the Clinton Fire and Police Game on April thirtieth. As we, um, as with our Staff-Student Game, they have decided to uh, put all those proceeds to ET Stamey as well. So hopefully, we'll be able to pull that off on April the thirtieth. Lots of good things happening. Any questions for me?
You know what time that game would be?
Um, I do not. They have not announced that yet, but I believe the first, I believe last time it was gonna be at five-thirty PM. But I will check and I will put that on our social media. I think Jeff Little's heading that up.
Any further questions or comments for Ms. Johnson? Lots of great things happening in Clinton. Nothing else, I'll declare this meeting adjourned.